We will now call the meeting of the Fayette County School Corporation Board of School Trustees Business Meeting to order. We are here at the Administration Building. It's Tuesday, December 10th, and it is 6:30 PM. And I would like to ask, we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a lovely crowd here tonight, and I think part of that is because we have some presentations tonight that we're looking forward to. So, at this point, I'd like to introduce Mr. Tyler and Ms. Clifford to present the CMS and CHS Singers.
Thank you. From CMS, we have Grace Thiller, Ally McHenry, and Maddie Hager, who are ready to come up and sing when Christmas comes to town.
I'm wishing on a star and trying to believe that even though it's far, you'll find me Christmas Eve. I guess that Santa's busy 'cause he's never come around. I think of him when Christmas comes to town. The best time of the year when everyone comes home with all this Christmas cheer. It's hard to be alone. Putting up the Christmas tree with friends who come around. It's so much fun when Christmas comes to town. Presents for the children wrapped in red and green. All the things I've heard about but never really seen. No one will be sleeping on the night of Christmas Eve, hoping Santa's on his way. Presents for the children wrapped in red and green. All the things I've heard about but never really seen. No one will be sleeping on the night of Christmas Eve, hoping Santa's on his way. When Santa's sleigh bells ring, I listen all around. The herald angels sing, I never hear a sound. And all the dreams of children once lost will now be found. That's all I want when Christmas comes to town. That's all I want when Christmas comes to town.
We have Vin Bischof and Hannah Lover, and they're going to sing what they perform Sunday at our Holiday Concert. And Vin Bischof is going to sing first.
Away in a manger, no crib for a bed. The little Lord Jesus lay down his sweet head. The stars in the sky looked down where he lay. The little Lord Jesus asleep on high. Oh, holy night, the stars are brightly shining. It is the night of our dear Savior's birth. Long lay the world in sin and error pining, till he appeared and the soul felt its worth. A thrill of hope, the weary world rejoices when yonder breaks a new and glorious morn. Fall on your knees, oh, hear the angel voices. O night, divine, oh night, when Christ was born. O night, divine, oh night, oh night, divine.
It might be a little loud.
(Laughter)
Mary, did you know that your baby boy would save our sons and daughters? Did you know that your baby boy would calm a storm with his hand? Did you know that your baby boy has come to make it end? This child that you delivered was to deliver you. The blind will see, the deaf will hear, the dying will live for God. The lame will live, the dumb will speak the praises of the Lamb. Mary, did you know that your baby boy is Lord of all creation? Mary, did you know that your baby boy would one day rule the nations? Did you know that your baby boy is heaven's perfect lamb? This sleeping child you're holding is a great. Oh, Mary, did you know?
Wow.
I don't know that there are words for that. That was just beautiful, all of you. You just, I got the chills. I don't know about anybody else sitting up here, but thank you for sharing with us.
Also applaud the Millstool Choir Concert is Thursday night at 7:00.
7:30.
7:30? Okay, 7:30, sorry.
Because Fayette Central Grand View at the High School at 6:00.
Oh, okay. So, come and listen to some more.
We will let them slowly gather their things, and folks are welcome to leave that need to leave.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We really have to have a business meeting now?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
You all have to sing.
Guys are going to sing.
Follow that.
Terry, I've heard Terry sing.
Terry can sing.
Paul feels like he got set up.
Follow that.
Well, you've got a moment, okay? Oh, no, actually, you don't have a moment. You're up, you're on, so go for it.
They bought food.
Oh, okay. But if you can't sing, you might as well feed people.
Well, Charlie did provide the charcuterie board that was out here today, so there was food.
It was very good.
And there is a current catering menu that everyone has with you, so we just redid the catering menus, and those are for outside events, so just so everybody has that on hand.
Do you do a lot of catering?
Um, we would like to do more. I think that is the answer to that, so we're trying to up our catering a little bit with that. We do more in-house caterings than we do outside caterings, so.
So, if we want something catered, we just call you?
You would actually, the contact info's all on that. You would actually want to get ahold of Charlie or I won, so Charlie would be your best contact, so. Tonight, we are going to have, Paul is here with us, Kendall, and you guys have all met Paul before, and he's going to talk about our CEP in our elementaries, how that's going so far, and this will kind of be from August to October. And then I'm going to jump in when Paul's finished with that, so.
Okay, Paul, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Board. Always a great opportunity to Dr. Collins and Janie, all thank you for the opportunity to talk about CEP, some of the great things happening with that, in my opinion. So, what we just wanted to provide you is a little snapshot of what's happening in each of your elementary. So, implemented CEP in each of the elementary starting this school year. We did that from a little bit of analysis on the way the USDA rates this. It's based on your direct certification. There's a lot of magical math that goes into it. Again, it's based on USDA regulations, and so it's a lot of tricky time spent in kind of working through when's the right time to move towards this. So, this is Eastview Elementary. You see, just from those beginning months, August through October, 33, almost 4,000 additional meals. A great thing about that is additional dollars. That's directly correlated to that, so great thing. You also know that when you're on CEP, we're not accumulating any additional negative debt, which I think is one of the key things every public institution is dealing with right now. What do they do with negative balance lunch debt? It's a scary word, and always winds up being out on the media as well, so that's a great benefit to this program, is we're not growing that. Here's Everton, about almost 1,900 meals increased. Fayette Central, 2231, which is fantastic. 1655 here at Fraser. Grandview, almost another 1,500. Maplewood, again, almost another 2,000 there. All elementaries, just about 13,000 additional meals. When we look at that broken down by day, which is, I think, what's impactful, on average, we're eating 49 additional students every day in every single elementary. That's just lunch. So, we're impacting a lot of folks with the program. I think it's definitely moving in the right direction, and again, we're increasing the dollars, feeding more kids, and not growing our negative debt, in my opinion. Getting to see lots of school districts across the state, that is three key positive things you can't be wrong with there.
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
So, would these be kids that were bringing lunch before? Why are we getting, how are we getting an increase?
It could have been students that were bringing their lunch before, absolutely, could have been that. Maybe populations changed a little bit in buildings. Any of those things could have been there. I would say we're hitting packers more, I think, so folks that, you know, didn't want to spend. It's free now versus, right, $3 before, and the parents taking advantage of having the opportunity to not have to pack the kids' lunch every day.
Right. That's what I wondered. Thank you.
I figured there would probably be another point of contention that would come to this before Rachel. So, great things all in the elementary. I anticipate a question is, why wouldn't we be doing this in all of our buildings, middle and high school? And frankly, we've studied that. So, in your high school, you don't qualify yet, so it's 30, you have to meet 40% direct certification. You're about 39%. And then in middle school, we qualify there, but the finances just don't make sense. So, it would really turn the program upside down from a, you know, it would be a cost negative to the district, and so wouldn't be financially beneficial, and not that it's all about finances, but also we don't want to be a drain on the general fund in these programs as well.
Why would it be, why would it not work at the middle school? Can you explain how that?
Yeah. So, what happens is when you, there's, like I said, there's a magic calculator that the USDA puts out, so there's a direct certification, and whatever percentage of direct certification you get, they take it times 1.6, and that gives you your, you lose the reduced category when it comes to reimbursement, okay? So, you only get a paid category and a free category. So, there's a big difference. One's about $3.30 and one's about .36. The middle section is roughly, you say, call it 240. So, you lose all of that, plus you lose the cash that would come in from kids that are paying or paying their reduced meals. And so, you only get to claim in those two categories. That percentage that you get from whatever your direct cert is, times 1.6, every meal is either claimed at free or at paid, based on that equivalency there. And so, that becomes the drag. What I've seen is, if you're really going to be careful here, it can be a great benefit and a positive to districts. I have seen in the past where folks moved to CEP because they thought this was going to fix their financial problems because they weren't controlling costs, and then they buried themselves in a financial disaster, and we just wouldn't want to recommend you go in that direction. But a lot of great news, because I think we're moving and helping families that needed it and benefiting the community directly, so. Any more questions about CEP? Looking forward to kind of wrapping these results up later in the year as well, just kind of giving you a grand total of what it looked like for the entire district. Rachel?
We'll move on to, in your binders, I have this in here also, and it's our local produce, so we do buy from, through Piazza Produce. Piazza has to be our produce vendor, basically. It has to be someone that's approved from the USDA. We have to make sure, you know, they're meeting guidelines when it comes to that. But they do purchase from local farmers when they can, so I have included, I didn't put it on the slides, but I have included some of the local farms that we purchase from. We have purchased a little over $3,000 from August to October in local produce. So, I kind of wanted to put that out there, but there is some stuff that is local that we get, as long as it's approved and it meets guidelines through Piazza. Our fruit and vegetable bar, we kind of talked about this, so we have a menu advisory board, and Lori is gracious enough to serve on that with me, and has done it before also. And we talked about this in the, in the meeting. So, the extra, extra bar that is available, the fruit and vegetable bar that's available at all the schools daily, is free to the kids. If the kids want to come back and get more fruits and vegetables, they can come back as many times as they want. Any of our schools, they can do that, high school and middle school included. If someone does want an extra slice of pizza, they want a chicken sandwich, they want an extra order of french fries, they are going to have to pay for that, even at the elementaries. So, we have had some parents that have been confused. Well, our meals are free at the elementary now, while you still might want to have some money in the account for that extra slice of pizza, so, and that's $1.50. It's not anything crazy for an extra slice of pizza, chicken sandwich, extra order of fries, 80 cents. But they can go back and get bananas, anything cold, off the fruit and veggie bar as much as they want without being charged. So, kind of wanted to clarify that, because we had brought that up in the meeting too, making sure parents have money in accounts, even at elementary for extras. And perfectly delicious produce, we had talked about this at a Food Policy Council meeting with Food Pantry, and I did, I did want to bring that up, and there's some information in your binder. We do buy from IDP through Piazza. So, this may be stuff that normally would not be sold at a grocery store that's not really pretty. It's usually carrots and celery that we get, and we do buy it at a discounted price, and it doesn't go to waste, doesn't get thrown in a landfill somewhere. So, right now, currently, we're buying the celery and our carrots through that program, and you can see in your slide, I think this is Compass Group as a whole, so it's not just Fayette County schools, but over four years, we've rescued 8.2 million pounds of food, so, through that program. So, it is a very good program, because I really don't care what my vegetables look like, they all taste the same. So, the kids don't either. So, going back into the negative debt, and I think that's our last slide that we have, we have been in the process of reviewing our charge policy, and right now, currently at our high school and middle schools, you can see the balance is growing. This is only from August to October, and I actually checked it before I came over today, and you might as well tack on $200 more to each school. So, we email twice a week to parents. They don't have an email. We send letters home. If we actually got to the point, anybody over, I think it was $25 that Mr. Judd and Beth, or was it 50? They were helping us, having counselors call and trying to collect, even to see if maybe they should be on free and reduced lunch, they need to fill out a form. We can go back 10 days and take 10 days' worth of balance off per the state, so try to help maybe get some of that taken care of. And I've sent out emails this week trying to work with some parents, so we don't have to turn them over to collection agencies. That's what our current charge policy says, and I've had some responses back from parents. We do not allow them to charge à la carte, so if they don't have money on them and they come up for a meal, they can get their meal. We're not going to make them choose a peanut butter and jelly like we used to, or a ham and cheese sandwich. They can get any meal they want, any hot item, any cold item, it does not matter. We're going to charge them, and we're going to let them charge as much as they want. We're not going to take that meal away, the high school or middle school. But we will not allow them to charge à la carte if they don't have money on their account. So, that's where we're at right now with the middle school and high school, and it's kind of ties in with the CEP impact. We do constantly look to see if we would ever qualify at the high school and middle school, and it's, it's never worked. Like Paul said, 39% at the high school, and it was 43% at the middle school as of today. It just wouldn't work there, so it's trying to figure out how we can collect on these negative balances and make sure that we don't hurt the Food Service Fund and eventually the general fund because of this, so.
Janie, do we get much from collections? Or would you know where it went?
We get some. Right now, our policy says we will give them an alternate meal, but when we went to CEP at the elementary schools, Rachel and I decided that we would let the kids have whatever meal they wanted, and we would work on revising our policy. At the end of the year, all of these accounts will be turned over to a collection agency, but, and we collect some. We get food service money about every month, just like we get a little bit of textbook money, but it's not a lot.
And I've probably had, I sent out over 400 emails this week, and I've had about 10 parents contact me directly about filling out applications and making payment arrangements on their balance that was due, because they did qualify for free or reduced. So, it did reach some parents, and it got through to them, and we are working with them to get this collected, but obviously, there's a lot more that we're not reaching.
I think there's a difficulty with them understanding too, we are only allowed to go back 10 days and claim that for reimbursement. The other side is, it's not like a business where they can just elect to write off bad debt. We cannot do that, because Food Service Fund is considered a federal fund. So, if we are going to write it off, we have to take money from our taxing fund. It's actually the operations fund to move that over. We, you as a board, did that, and everyone started the school year with a zero or a positive balance. And for us to be at $10,000 negative between the middle school and high school is pretty frustrating to me that these parents aren't. You know, their elementary students are getting a meal for free. They should.
How are parents paying for this? Because I've heard some concerns with parents when they go to try to pay online. There has been some difficulty with this, for whatever reason.
Some parents were still going, trying to go to MySchoolBucks, which it has, it was updated on the Food Service webpage at the beginning of the year. It's K12PaymentCenter.com, and we've sent out flyers, and I know the schools have put that in their newsletters.
In their newsletters.
And I've also told people when they email or call me to go to that site, and they do charge a fee, and it's a smaller fee than MySchoolBucks, which is one of the reasons why we went with them. But the best way to pay is to send the money with your kid or come in and pay it. You can come to the Food Service Office and pay me, Charlie, or Shannon, and we'll gladly take it and put it on your kid's account.
The online fee is, actually, can be significantly less.
Yes.
Because if you had a student at the elementary school, and the middle school, and the high school, you had three different transactions previously with the system we used to have. The new system allows you to say, I want $30 on Bobby's, $30 on Suzie's, and $50 on Tommy's, and you make one payment and one fee.
Mm-hmm. It's a lot more user-friendly, so.
Yes.
And this has become my daily life. I print it off every morning, and I start looking through and seeing who I need to try to get ahold of, because... Because there are some parents that do qualify and they just don't know, but we're to the point now where they have built up such a balance that it's only gonna go back ten days. So they, we can do payment arrangements, I'll take whatever they have. If it's a dollar a week, send us a dollar a week. I mean, we'll, we'll work with them, so.
Suzie's balance higher than it has been in past years, or is it about the same?
I would say...
I think it's difficult to tell.
Yeah, it is.
I'm just gonna jump in here.
It is.
Because we had all of that debt accumulate for years and years and years, and the number got large and you didn't, you didn't really notice it. And then we wrote it off, you know, uh, we didn't write it off, we, we paid it off. So to have a true indication of what the first two months were, um, or first three months, excuse me, in previous years is, is hard to track.
So they started zero balance at the beginning of the year, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
So this is...
That's what's frustrating to me, that the two schools were almost ten thousand dollars. And the elementary kiddos are getting lunch for free, so the parents aren't paying anything for those. And I know some of them may not have elementary students, they may only have middle school and high school, so.
And does anyone else have any other food service questions while I'm here? I think we had a breakfast kit too, um, it may be out there, I sent it over earlier, um, then you guys can look at. Um, at some point, we're offering those at the elementary schools, at some of our elementary schools. I think Mrs. McCarty's here. Uh-huh. It kinda caused a ruckus, I think, at her school, but...
We had to order more.
Yeah, they, they...
So it was choosing those over the other meals.
Yeah, they all wanted them.
These are really cool, I think, because they're the breakfast meals.
Yes.
And the kids can pick those, and so if they're not hungry at breakfast, they could throw them in their backpack and eat it later, or take it home for the weekend for their breakfast.
Do you still give them, do you just keep charging?
Yeah.
So really, I mean, there's no...
Kind of a losing situation, yeah. It is, it's, that's what it is.
Okay, yeah, I just, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yep, and I'm guessing you haven't had any um, philanthropic clubs, organizations, businesses that have...
Not this year, and I'm wondering if it's because they're thinking because we're CEP, maybe they're under the impression, well, so we've had previously, a lot of them will ask for, go to elementary specifically and not middle or high school. So I'm hoping that maybe um, some people might hear this and help us out a little bit um, with our high school and middle school balances.
We could go back to giving them an alternate meal if the board wants, but...
No, because I think that that's...
If we're gonna turn them over to the collection agency at the end, I, I feel better about not giving them a peanut butter sandwich or a ham sandwich that we're gonna charge them three dollars for. They get the meal of their choice. I get it, but I can't knock the kids.
It's very hard at the high school and middle school too. At an elementary, you can call the teacher and say, hey, Johnny is gonna have to get a peanut butter, can you prepare him for this? At the high school, there's no way to get to that student before they get their food. Um, and, and the middle school's the same, um, and be like, hey, you're gonna have to get that alternate lunch. It's very hard to do that, so.
Well, and the, the stigma that's attached to it with all the, their friends that they sit down at the table with, well, why are you eating a peanut butter sandwich? You know, that's, that's horrible for middle school and high school.
But, but you do, you, you do lose, you know, you, you just, I think, to Andy's point or whatever, you know, if you don't...
Yeah.
Yeah, punitive's not the right word, but if you don't make an alteration, there's no incentive for them to necessarily pay. So I think that's his point, but that's, that's the struggle.
Well, if, if, if you give them an alternate meal, you're punishing the child. If you take them to collection, you're taking care of the parent, which is perhaps the root of problems.
But, but, but what we did do was, if you have a negative balance, you cannot purchase à la carte at all. So if you have five dollars negative on your account or whatever, or twenty dollars, you still cannot get a bag of chips.
Right.
Um, and pay cash for it. That cash has to go towards that. Still not working, but it's...
We've, we've tried to do that and, and hopefully they'll pay their balance, so.
Yeah.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay, um, at this point, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the agenda as submitted and amended.
I saw you.
Thank you, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh, patron comments on agenda items, seeing none. We'll move on to the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes from the regular business meeting of eleven, twelve, nineteen, the personnel report, including retirements, resignations, leaves of absence, et cetera, the approval of November twenty nineteen claims, five four nine seven seven through five five two four five, the appointment of Brian Hensley to the Fayette County Area Plan Commission, the end of year business office procedures, the disposal of surplus technology, and donations, which are quite healthy tonight. A donation of five hundred dollars from the Whitewater Valley Corvette Club to WCC to be used for tools and materials for the auto collision and auto technology programs. A donation of eleven thousand seven hundred five dollars and fifty-four cents from the Fayette County Diabetic Support Group to be used for CHS student scholarships. A grant of seven fifty from the National Theater for Children for CMS. A donation of six hundred dollars from Capita Capita Sigma Sorority for the Elementary Health Assistance to be used for purchasing clothing and/or hygiene supplies. Very generous. So I would like to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lori, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dennis. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand, opposed, same sign, motion carries. We will now move on to action items, the personnel report, Mr. Hensley.
Uh, thank the President. Thank you, Board. A few recommendations this evening. Uh, for certified staff, we have Candace McCann. Uh, Candace is gonna be the social worker at Everton and Frey-Z. Classified staff, Caitlin Clark, Special Education Assistant for Maplewood. Desiree Runyon, Head Start Education Assistant at Maplewood. And for extracurricular, Heidi Davidson, the Assistant Gymnastics Coach for the high school. Clayton DeBoer, Middle School Baseball Coach. Chad House, Varsity Assistant Girls Basketball Coach. Kevin Perry, Seventh Grade Girls White Basketball Coach. And Summer Rosenberg, Eighth Grade Girls White Basketball Coach.
Okay, thank you, Brian. I would like to seek a motion to approve the personnel report.
I saw you.
Thank you, Andy, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Andy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Will I move on to the approval of the twenty twenty school board meeting calendar, Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs, Board. Uh, the calendar for twenty twenty mirrors what we've been doing this year. Uh, I share that and some background information, so we do have a couple of times when we stagger the meeting times to a, a week later based on some things going on in, in the district. So I present this to you for approval for the twenty twenty school board meeting calendar.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to seek a motion to approve the school board meeting calendar for twenty twenty.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mark, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your hand, opposed, same sign, motion carries. I just noticed this lovely backdrop we have of the fireplace and the Christmas singer, very nice.
It gets too warm up there, let us know.
I think that's from the Hallmark channel.
Yes. Okay, um, next up, approval of the professional service agreement, Mr. Collins.
Thank you, once again. Uh, I've been very pleased with Michelle Cooper and her services provided uh, through Lewis and Capus. I think she's one of the finest school attorneys in our state. And uh, providing to you is the agreement for twenty twenty, and her terms have remained unchanged. She has not increased any fees with us for three years now, so that's uh, compliment to her and her firm, so I present this to you for approval to continue that partnership for the coming year.
Thank you. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the professional service agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lori, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dennis. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by raising your hand, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Approver of the copier, cop, approval of the copier purchase, Ms. Callum Tolliver.
Thank you.
Mr. Ben.
Um, this evening, we're requesting the replacement of uh, the main copier units at our elementary schools and two units at our middle school.
Yes.
The Career Center has requested a slightly smaller unit to add to their fleet. Um, at the high school, the high school has two very large units. So what we're doing um, with this recommendation is, we are asking for you to approve a smaller unit, still does booklets with a saddle finisher, duplexes, black and white copies, high speed, to see if the high school likes that unit. And if so, then we will come back and ask for an additional one of these. However, if they find that some features of their really big units are missing, we will then come back and make a recommendation for one of those units to be the really large programmable copier. But we thought we could give it a try and see if this fit all of the um, points that they needed. The other copier's about nine thousand dollars more. And so um, this is our recommendation. Some of these copiers, we will ask for a trade-in value for. Some of them will be moved to a secondary location where those copiers are ten years, and I think we even have a couple that might be fourteen years old. So we'll slide them into a lower volume area. There are a couple of the units we don't wanna keep in the corporation because they've had huge service issues, so they'll be the ones we have to trade in.
Very familiar, very familiar.
Um, five and a half years, we got out of these units.
That's what I was gonna ask you, what the life's been of a good copier.
Yeah, we purchased these mid two thousand fourteen. That's really about when all of our units hit their useful life, we found.
Janie, have we had a volume increase or decrease since taking on the new technology, iPads, et cetera, et cetera?
I don't know, Terry might speak to that. We're still printer happy.
Well, I ask for a hard copy of our meeting every, every time, so I'm in that, I just wonder if the volume had changed much.
I think it depends upon the department, because I do a lot of copying at the middle school, and the English department doesn't, you, doesn't copy as much, and neither does social studies, but math and science are, are about the same, and I've been doing copying there for a long time.
Mr. Miller's looking into some technology that's out there and whether it would integrate with this to be able to track um, copier usage down to the user, whether it be through a FOB or, they do have codes, but some of them are shared codes. So he's working on that so we can figure out where our greatest opportunities might be. These all come with um, fax boards as well. So our goal is to um, move away from standalone fax units. Central Office, for a few years now, has used their copy machine as, as a fax. One of them has the fax board in it. And it, that is a piece of equipment, if, if they utilize these, we won't have to replace fax machines, we'll save on that. Um, the toner for se- fax machines was a separate add-on item with this purchase in our per copy maintenance on this, all toner, all supplies, soup to nuts, except for the paper, is included in our per copy maintenance charge, staples and everything.
Wow.
So we believe we'll save money in the long run by not having those, not having break and fix problems with fax machines, so.
Thank you, Ken.
Yeah, sounds good. Okay, I would like to obtain a motion to approve the copier.
On this one?
Thank you, Ann, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Any discussion?
Thank you, Ms. Killen Tolliver.
Mr. Miller.
Mr. Miller.
Feels instrumental in helping me work through all this.
Thank you. The copy repair person and I are on a first-name basis, uh, saw have three, twice already this week, so much appreciated.
I do wanna point out that we're using the state bid for this, we did not have to take um, but solicit bids on our own, we're using the state QPA is what it's called, Rico's the vendor of choice. So the state has already bid this, which works well for us because that's who we've utilized for the last two copier purchases.
Yes, okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Now we will move on to a discussion item, Mr. Hensley, on the Resource Center.
Yeah, I'll ask Cindy if she can drive the presentation for me. So um, I just put together a quick uh, presentation. The, the Resource Center, we've had some ongoing discussion about it, um, kinda what's the uh, potential use going forward or, or what we're gonna do with it. So I wanted to put together a few things just to bring to your attention and also offer you um, the opportunity, if anyone from the board would want to um, get in touch with me, and we can go over to the Resource Center, and I can show you these things in person, because sometimes pictures don't do them justice, so. Um, so you can see here, this is the Northwest uh, foundation, and you can see the deterioration there. Um, and I'm going to emphasize that most of the, the things that I'm talking about aren't really cosmetic. These are some, some major um, structural um, building integrity issues that, that I wanna bring to your attention. So, so here's the Northwest uh, foundation deterioration, and this is, this is just one picture. There's a lot of that deterioration along the entire uh, foundation of the building. You can go ahead. These are two different pictures of the parking lot. So underneath the existing parking lot is the original building foundation from, from the middle school. When it was uh, filled in and created a parking lot, the, the foundation is still there, so there's something that's going on under the ground around that foundation, and, and water is kinda washing away and creating holes that then we have to come back and then fill in with gravel. Uh, the smaller hole on the left-hand picture, um, it was, you could, I could reach my arm all the way down and still not touch bottom. So, so, yeah, so, so we, you know, that's one that we constantly kind of monitored and we fill with gravel.
Single in the parking lot?
Yeah, and you can see in the picture on the right, um, that's where the, the kinda, the concrete walkway meets the, meets the parking lot. So same issue going on there, which uh, really, without doing some major, um, some excavating to do some, some evaluation of that, it's, it's hard telling what the, what the impact could be for something like that. Okay. You'll notice here, this is uh, I wanted to point out the elevation difference from the parking lot down to the base where the, where the mulch comes down and into the building. You can see there, that's almost a three-foot elevation difference. And what this causes is all the water, all the rain, all the runoff, it just, it funnels down, leans up against the building, and then it migrates through the foundation wall because it's, because it's cinder block and it just sucks the moisture in, and it creates moisture um, on the inside, which then creates mold. Um, now, as long as we keep the building heated and keep the humidity at a certain level, mold will not grow, but um, the, the, this is a major issue. Um, to, to fix this, what would need to happen was retaining wall would need to be created across the entire front of the building. All the, the mulch, the trees and everything would need to be taken away. We'd have to put perimeter drain down and then pour concrete across the front. Um, just to keep, because right now, everything off the parking lot just rolls right into the building. It settles there and the water just, just kinda, you know, sucks right into the building, so, okay. Here's some structural, structural settling cracking, uh, this is in the gym, um, and this is, again, I could've taken dozens of pictures of this, but I just wanted to point it out, so uh, those are significant. Um, I was down on the gym floor, this was up above, and you, it's prob, that's probably about three-quarters of an inch to an inch thick crack. But again, that's from the structural, the foundational issues.
So do you think that with all that moisture causing the foundation to change?
Absolutely.
That's what's pushing that hole, that's what I figured out, it's structural engineering.
Yeah, okay.
Plus, it's a very old building.
It's a very old building, correct.
It's, this had a lot of stress, correct, with the fire? This had a lot of stress, correct, with the fire? Was that, was the front part of that?
Yeah.
That was seventy-eight.
Yeah, but I mean, that was attached to the building that was on fire. Okay.
Right.
Yeah. So there's structural issues to be...
And some HVAC issues. So these are both units that are in the gym. These HVAC units have cracked heat exchangers, which, when they do that, if you run a HVAC unit with a cracked heat exchanger, it emits carbon dioxide, which is deadly, so these are unusable. You can go to the next slide. So I've put together, I feel like I've been very conservative with these numbers, so I think if I actually went out and got quotes, that we would probably see a higher number than this. So with the roof, we're looking at approximately eighty-five thousand dollars to replace. This, I figured this at four dollars and twenty-five cents a square foot. That's a great price if we could get that, but that's what I figured, that eighty-five thousand dollars, so it could be more than that. If we wanted to replace all the windows in the building, it would be approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. I based this estimate off of the window replacement that we did at Everton Elementary School. So that was approximately eighty thousand dollars. And so I know the Resource Center is much bigger than Everton, so again, I'm conservative with that number. The heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, approximately fifteen thousand dollars. The retaining wall I mentioned, forty thousand, and you can go right down the list there. And then the foundation and the structural issues, I would hate to guess what that would cost, because there would just be, until you kind of start peeling the onion, you really don't know what's inside. So I didn't even want to quantify that with a number, because I don't know what that would be. But you're looking at, just what I have here, that's three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars as a very conservative estimate. And again, these aren't, this isn't makeup and lipstick. This is, you know, structural things, if, you know, to make the building usable. So again, I'm not looking for a recommendation or anything like that. I just wanted to share this with you, bring this to your attention, and again, offer you the opportunity that if you would like to come and take a look, I can show you these things firsthand, so...
And with the price of construction now, it's hard to even find people who are willing to come out and go as pricey locally. And I don't know, foundation, would you guess over six figures pretty easily? Six figures, probably?
It would be well into the six figures, but again, I hate to even guess, because you don't know until you get into it.
And I've shared some things with the board about this concern with that building. I don't remember the whole history. I know it was an add-on, but I don't know what the age of that. Do you know, Brian, what the age of that addition is?
I don't know. I'd have to do some research.
I had no idea.
Fire was about eighty-one, I think.
Was it eighty-one? I thought it was late seventies. I don't even know in that...
No. Just, I was coaching the freshman basketball team, and they had to go help get all the toilet paper and paper towel out of the building down there, so we just stopped practice that night, went down there and tried to save money. The kids enjoyed it, rather than me yelling at them at basketball practice.
Thank you, Brian, for the information. Okay, well, public comments are next. Persons wishing to make the board aware of suggestions, ideas, and or comments may address the board at this time. Comments which involve personnel or students must be discussed in private. Having none, we will now move on to report items. Superintendent's Discussion Group Reports. Principal Director's Reports. Director of Human Resources Reports. Director of Finance Report.
I'm good. Thank you.
Assistant Superintendent Report.
I don't have anything, but I wish everybody happy holidays. Joyous rest.
Thank you.
And Superintendent's Report.
I always have something. A few things. First, wanna congratulate Riley Loper.
Yes.
The Lilly Scholarship winner. Riley's an outstanding young lady, fascinating, just so involved in so many things, and I'm just, we had a really great group of kids, again, and I know that that family's very excited about that, so congratulations to Riley and her family. Wanna recognize Roger Tyler. As you all know, Roger is retiring at the end of this year, and so as you sit there and you watch the programs and think this is his last winter Christmas program, you know, I know Roger's invested a lot, so I wanna thank him for all the years and the fine programs. And then also our elementary, we had Senator Leising meet with us at the Career Center yesterday, so I didn't get away until about quarter till or ten till, and I came by the office, and so it was about five till six. I couldn't find a parking place out here at the high school for the Everton-Frey-Z combined music program. The auditorium was full. It was unbelievable. And so, you know, this is something new we're trying this year, but I said I wanted parents and family to have seats. Ryan and I were standing along the back wall, because there were no seats on the lower level. We had some up top, but that was really, it was just neat. I think the kids were in awe.
They were.
Kim was out in the back helping direct and lead, but these little guys were, some of them were too shy to sing, because you had a full house, and that was pretty intimidating.
Yeah, they were a little intimidated when they walked out and saw the entire place was packed, 'cause we practiced earlier in the morning, and they got to see the auditorium, but it was empty, and it was dark, and then all of a sudden, bright lights, and it's full, and there are people on the balcony, and the little kindergartners were like, "I can't do it." We're like, "Yeah, you can, you can."
And they've all been told they're gonna be on TV, too.
And the TV...
Oh, yeah, and they knew they were on TV, so...
Correct.
Parents were saying all kinds of positive things today on social media, just...
I heard from several, and so we have two more coming up. I don't have the dates in front of me, but Thursday is one.
Thursday and Tuesday.
Thursday and Tuesday.
If you can get up to one, it's nice, and it's a combined effort, so Sarah's did a really nice job with trying to merge those two groups of K-3 kids, which is not always easy, so... And I left something up here, Leslie, we need to get...
Tertie cats.
It was, but they did a great job.
I would like for Cindy Young to come up here. Come on, Cindy. As you all know, and as I know, Cindy is retiring January tenth. It's her last day serving the community, serving Fayette County Schools, thirty-four years. And Cindy started out at Fayette Central and then moved here in 2000 as the superintendent to the secretary superintendent, and I ran her off, so I'm gonna be known as the guy that sent her to retire. She doesn't forget. I've known Cindy most of my life, and somebody high character, somebody who cares, and somebody who's dedicated to her job, and I'm gonna miss you a lot. And Cindy Lynch has big shoes to fill, because Cindy is stepping into her job and keeping her old job, so I know they've been working together a lot, and this is Cindy's first time at the table next to me, and so you've done well. But I just wanna say thank you on behalf of Fayette County Schools for your years of service. So there's your plaque. Let's get a pic. Leslie, would you like to?
Yeah.
Leslie...
She keeps our board in line, really.
She sure does. And me.
She's the one that reminds us.
How was it sitting back there?
It was a little harder back there to see and keep track of. It has been, it has been very good. And I love everybody here.
We love you.
The corporation.
We love you.
You've kept us together. Somehow she manages to get Chris to come back all night, all these meetings that never signed.
I was gonna say, I enjoy the harassment she's given me all this time.
That won't stop Chris.
She's gonna pass that news along to Cindy.
Yes, she has your number.
She sure does.
Your name is first on the list for to-do things with Cindy, right? Right, Cindy?
Okay, for the good of the cause, does anybody have anything they'd like to share tonight?
The CHS band, their performance at Disney World, saw the video. Actually, I think my son saw it in person, and very proud to be a Spartan, a long way away from home, and wanna compliment Levi and Adam. They do a great job with the kids, and the basketball game just wasn't the same without them, and having them back again this weekend was great. But that was a lot of time and a lot of effort and a lot of money that they had to raise, and they really represented Indiana and Connersville specifically very, very well at Disney by playing and just, they had a great time, so kudos to the instrumental music program. It's in really good shape.
I just wanna thank all the folks involved in yesterday's visit with Senator Leising, including Grandview opening their classrooms up for Senator Leising walking through, and just, our staff is articulate and welcoming and really, I thought it was wonderful that Senator Leising came. She's always very personable. She always brings lots of materials and prepares, and there was some healthy dialogue that took place at that roundtable, and I'm happy the Career Center opened their conference room for us to share that space, so that was, that was great. And I'm always pleased to see how our teachers and administrators carry themselves in those meetings with our senators, so thank you for that. And anything else? Nothing else? Okay. With that, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make it a motion.
A man in the short chair.
Yes.
And who's gonna second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mark. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign, needing adjourn.
That's my last time doing Chris.